All right, it's nine o'clock, Jerry. We'll call the meeting to order. Sunny is not here for today. First item is approval of the May twenty-nine, twenty-eighteen minutes. Did everyone get a chance to take a look at those? Are there any corrections? If not, I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the June fourth, twenty-eighteen minutes. If you had a chance to look at those, if there is not any corrections, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Today's agenda. Are there any corrections or discussions about today's agenda? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve today's agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Motion is second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Just for the audience today, if you haven't gotten an agenda, they're back in the back on the bookshelf back there if you want to follow along. And then Brittany, we're ready for you.
Good morning. Brittany Molitor, Environmental Planning Supervisor. The consent agenda, the following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by the planning commission, by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. Item number four is conditional use permit review CU sixteen oh nine for Ken Nash to review two new off-premise signs within fifteen hundred feet of a residential zoning district or dwelling unit in a highway service district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU sixteen oh nine with five conditions. Item number five is conditional use permit review CU seventeen twenty-eight for Laura Pankratz. Ken Nash is the agent. To review three existing signs to be relocated on the subject property to allow for the three existing signs to be located within fifteen hundred feet of a residential zoning district or dwelling unit and to allow for the three existing signs to be located closer to each other than the requirement of no signs that shall be located no closer than fifteen hundred feet from all other signs in a highway service district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU seventeen twenty-eight with eight conditions. Item number six is conditional use permit CU eighteen eleven for Lori Nor to allow a multifamily dwelling on the subject property in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the withdrawal of conditional use permit CU eighteen eleven with the applicant's concurrence. Item number seven is conditional use permit CU eighteen thirteen for Randy Worksfield to allow a twelve-by-twelve cabin to be occupied on a seasonal basis and not to be occupied more than one hundred and eighty days per calendar year in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU eighteen thirteen with nine conditions. Item number eight is conditional use permit CU eighteen fifteen for the Koenig Family Trust. Sheila Watkins is the agent. Idahois Mountain of, excuse me, Idahois Mountain Lodging is the agent to allow an existing residence to be used as a vacation home rental in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU eighteen fifteen with fifteen conditions. Item number nine is conditional use permit CU eighteen sixteen for David and Karen Modlin to allow an existing residence to be used as a vacation home rental in a low resident, low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit eighteen sixteen with seventeen conditions. Item number ten is layout plat PL eighteen oh seven for Kenneth Smith to reconfigure lot lines to create lot A, R, lot C, and lot D of block two in the original town site of Caputa. Staff recommends to continue layout plat PL eighteen oh seven to the September tenth, two thousand and eighteen Planning Commission meeting with three conditions. Item number eleven is road naming for Laredo Holdings LLC to name a proposed sixty-six-foot-wide public right-of-way providing access to property located in section thirty-three. Staff recommends approval of the road naming of Lasso Lane. Item number twelve is a road naming, Laredo Holdings LLC to name a proposed sixty-six-foot-wide public right-of-way providing access to property located in section thirty-three. Staff recommends approval of the road naming of High Moon Court. Item number thirteen is minor plat PL eighteen fifteen and subdivision regulations variants SV eighteen oh five for Laura Pankratz. Ken Nash is the agent to create lots two, three, four, and five of Pankratz subdivision and to waive planning requirements. Staff recommends approval of subdivision regulation variants SV eighteen oh five and approval of minor plat eighteen fifteen with eighteen, or excuse me, eight conditions. And item fourteen is mining permit MP eighteen oh one for Pennington County Highway Department to mine gravel for road maintenance in an area north of Wall. Staff recommends approval of mining permit MP, or excuse me, to recommend approval of mining permit MP eighteen oh one with fourteen conditions.
Thank you very much. Any items the staff want to pull?
No, thank you.
Any items that the planning commission would like to pull from the consent agenda? All right. Any audience members, all those items that were just read off by Brittany? Any of those items, would y'all like to have them pulled off the consent calendar, the consent agenda? All right. If not, that leaves our consent agenda items four through fourteen, so I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Takes us to item number fifteen.
Item fifteen is layout plat PL eighteen fourteen to create lots one through eight of Keystone Y subdivision. The applicant has requested this layout plat to subdivide four existing lots which are currently mining loads into eight lots. As the property stands today, they're four separate lots. All existing lots are currently zoned general agriculture district and the future land use designation for these lots is planning unit development sensitive. There's no special flood hazard area on the existing properties. All four existing properties are currently vacant. The four properties consist of lots ranging from three point one-three acres to nine point four-one acres. The proposed lots, one through eight, would range in size from about three point zero acres to six point two-eight acres. There would be dedicated a forty-foot-wide access easement proposed to be named Twin Drive. There's a hundred and sixteen-foot diameter turnaround easement which is located on proposed lot four. The proposed lots would not meet the minimum lot size requirements for general agriculture districts, so a rezone or lot size variance would be required. This was routed through the interdepartmental review process. There were a couple of items of concern that came up from the county highway department. They had indicated that a sixty-six-foot right, wide right-of-way would be required in lieu of the forty-foot-wide right-of-way. And the road naming of Twin Drive did come up as not being acceptable for nine-one-one and addressing coordinator. There was an ordinance violation previously on this property as the road was built without any construction permit. Prior, this was part of an ordinance violation. As part of this layout plat, it would be recommended that they do get a construction permit and build the road in accordance with ordinance fourteen standards. Staff is recommending approval of this layout plat with sixteen conditions.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none. Any audience members have any questions or comments on this item? All right, seeing none. Recommendation is, staff recommends approval of layout plat PL eighteen fourteen with the following sixteen conditions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item sixteen.
Item sixteen is layout plat PL eighteen thirteen to create lots A and B of lot two, of lot B of lot four of the Iowa Placer MS number six thirty-six. Currently, as it stands now, this property is zoned highway service district. It consists of seven point nine-two acres. There are approximately seven storage unit buildings on this property and a caretaker's residence. In addition, there are two conditional use permits to allow the many storage units on this site. As it is proposed right now, they would like to propose lot A, which would consist of five point six-seven-seven acres, still be zoned highway service district, and it would encompass the seven storage unit buildings and the caretaker's residence. Lot B would consist of two point two-four-three acres. It would be zoned highway service district, and it is currently vacant of any structures. There is an existing approach off of Highway thirty-five, and both lots would have to share that approach as comments from South Dakota Department of Transportation. There was no other items of concern that came up on this property. Staff is recommending approval of this layout plat with nine conditions.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none. Any audience members like to speak on behalf of this item? Seeing none. Staff recommends approval of layout plat PL eighteen thirteen with the following nine conditions.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That takes us to item seventeen.
Item seventeen is conditional use permit CU eighteen fourteen to allow for seasonal retail sales of Class C fireworks in a heavy industrial district. As the property stands today, it is zoned, or excuse me, heavy industrial district, consists of six point two-three acres. It is a county island surrounded by the city of Box Elder on three sides and the city of Rapid City on one side. Is the current location of Woodstock Supply. Access is off a fronted road south of Interstate ninety Service Road. There's no special flood hazard area on the property. It's within both the city of Box Elder and the city of Rapid City Platten jurisdictions. And it's within the city of Rapid City's Onset Waste Water Treatment System jurisdiction. The lot contains a thirty-two-thousand-square-foot storage warehouse. It was constructed in nineteen fifty-eight. And in addition, it's a ninety-two-hundred storage warehouse. In addition, there is a ninety-two-hundred-square-foot storage warehouse. Prior to this, the fireworks were conducted in a tent outside the property. Now they would like to conduct it inside the ninety-two-hundred-square-foot storage building. Consideration for conditional use permit. Number one, the effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity. The proposed conditional use for the temporary sale of fireworks in an existing building should not have any significant effect upon the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity or should it negatively affect property values, especially considering the limited time period of the sale of the fireworks around the property. The effect of the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for the use is predominant in the area. Considering the surrounding land uses have several commercial businesses currently operating daily, the temporary fireworks sale should have little effect on the development or improvement of the surrounding properties in the near future. The utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. All necessary public utilities exist on the property, and due to the temporary use nature of the fireworks sales in the existing building, no additional utility should be necessary. That off-street parking and loading requirements from here, the area around the proposed location is already gravelled and is leveled to provide parking for the proposed temporary use. And that measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting. The proposed condition does not have any potential to produce odor, dust, and noise. Staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit with fifteen conditions.
Any questions for staff? Go ahead, Kathy.
You know, this is just kind of a point of curiosity, but, you know, one of the conditions has to do with removing the wood debris that's located across the tracks.
Yes.
You know, I don't quite understand why this was flagged as a concern. I mean, is it because, I mean, the fire concern and then because the fireworks represent a bigger concern if there were a fire? Or, I mean, it almost seems like these two things are separate. The fireworks is operating as a separate business, and then, you know, then the landowner has this debris pile that is, it's been there a while. So how do those connect?
I do believe that there was some concern from the fire administrator just about having stacks of firewood. There was, I believe that there was a complaint filed about it because of the looks of it. But that was one of the conditions. I know that PJ has been working with this property owner at length about getting the property in order, in order for the conditional use permit.
But there's really no connection really between the wood pile that belongs to the landowner and the fireworks, the firework operation.
No, it's just, it was a concern that came up on the property in, in and of itself.
Okay.
So, out of curiosity, because I think I'm pretty familiar with this fireworks place. They operated last year selling fireworks out of there, did they not?
I believe so. And their fireworks is stored off-site when they're not and being sold or ones that are unused.
So was it a concern last year, that debris pile? Because it's been there for years, if I remember.
And I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
Don't know if that was something that came up with the ordinance enforcement or not.
Okay. Any further questions for staff? I just, go ahead Lloyd.
I just got a comment that I was just out there this morning and looked at the building and so forth, because I knew this was on the agenda and I had some work to do out there. And I guess I didn't notice the stuff around the railroad track.
Yeah.
Yeah, unless you drive back there, you typically don't see it. I mean, I don't know who made the complaint, but, you know, they keep that pretty well hidden there, so. Any further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Rich.
As I read this, it says the city of Box Elder indicated the concern with the pile.
Okay.
But I would, I would, I guess I'd go along with Kathy's comments. I don't see how these are really related. There's a fire out there and concerned about the building, not the wood pile.
Right. Any further questions? Any audience members like to speak on behalf of this item? Go ahead, sir. Come on up, state your name.
Travis Bus. Just want to give you a little insight on the firewood pile. National Fire Protection Association actually has a code on this. It's code eleven twenty-four. It's specific to fireworks sales. Inside of the code, they have a specific statement on the distance of that, and I'm going to read that to you real quick. So code eleven twenty-four, seven point four point zero six retail sales site requirement. Seven point four point six point one clearance to combustibles within thirty feet from the accumulated dry grass, dry brush, and combustible debris end of the code. I believe you said you're out there. I think you can attest we're about a hundred yards away from that building. There is a structure within that. So, correct, they operated there last year, and the wood pile was obviously that distance at least from there. So that's what the National Fire Protection Association has to say with that.
If I may further comment?
Go ahead, state your name, please.
Nathan Shequen, attorney for All American Sales, doing business as Extreme Fireworks. Mr. Chair, just to address the commission, and good morning, everyone. What Travis was commenting on the wood pile, I believe the complaint came from the city of Box Elder. And if, for those that are familiar with the property, immediately to the south of the property is the Northern Lights Apartment Complex and Storage Facilities. And I believe it's been viewed as an eyesore by them, the main concern. I would also comment, it appears through the zoning ordinance that in, in such a heavy industrial area, it is permitted to, for the business to process their junk or discarded material on site. As many have commented, that is across the train tracks and sufficient distance away, I believe, from this proposed retail establishment. I took it upon myself to call Jerome Harvey, the county fire administrator, and he did not express any concern about that wood pile in particular. If I may also just comment generally on how All American Sales intends to operate its business. They, they meet all of the state and federal requirements. They only employ adults. They do not sell fireworks to intoxicated people. They do not sell large fireworks to little kids. They only purchase their fireworks through approved vendors. They carry liability insurance, premises liability insurance, and products liability insurance, I believe limits of two million dollars. They have two approved exits in this structure. They will only occupy, for retail purposes, the south half, and that half of the building is divided by firewall from the unoccupied north half of that building. They will have fire extinguishers on hand. I have seen them, many of them there. They have sufficient fans and lights. There is no heat source in there. They have signs available to post for no smoking and no discharge of fireworks within their required distances. There's a fire hydrant to the south side of the storage, or the retail space.
Between there and the wood pile.
And there is also another spigot, I believe, on the northeast corner of this building. Inside the structure there are six feet clearance between aisles, and there are continuous sightlines throughout the building. No fireworks are stored above basically waist-high. And they will have two bathrooms available for the public. All American Sales entered into a five-year lease with Woodstock Supply, and that started in May of two thousand and seventeen. I believe that was reported by staff. They have been operating there out of a tent for many years since about two thousand and five, on and off. And recently occupied that building last year. The owner of the Woodstock Supply built that building with the understanding that they would lease it to All American Sales and doing business as Extreme Fireworks. They did operate out of there last year as well. There is another competing fireworks business about a thousand feet to the west, which looks like it would be in the Box Elder city limits. That is also operating out of a permanent structure. I believe they operate under the name Big Fireworks or Old Glory.
Big.
Just B.I.G. B.I.G. I believe All American Sales has conveyed what they would intend to operate as far as business hours. By statute, they do have a special retail license where they can sell to non-residents of our state. Starting, actually, I believe it's on May one, they would not intend to, they would intend to sell as soon as possible. I understand the comments are that after the appeals period has expired, the, that would be one condition recommended for approval of this conditional use permit. And they would intend to sell through July fifth. They can sell to residents beginning on June twenty-seventh, and that's when their hours would expand beyond the eight to five, to, I think it's ten PM, eleven PM.
Midnight on Sundays. And that is according to state statute.
As you understand, the fireworks business is heavily regulated. They intend to comply with all that stuff. One concern of All American Sales and in the staff report and the comments is the condition that no fireworks be stored on the property outside of July fifth of each year. And just logistically, that does present some problems if that were to be a condition for All American Sales. They legally sell through July fifth, and just logistically to remove all their inventory, basically within one hour or so after that the sales period closes. It's just not practical for them, and they would ask for five to ten additional days to remove their surplus inventory from the, from the retail space. With that, I believe that the commission has been informed of a number of factors that would be considered in granting a conditional use permit. And I don't think that All American Sales presents an issue for any of those. And really, just a good business area. They're to serve primarily a lot of the residents and then the I ninety traffic. But I also have a comment from an advertiser that I am prepared to share if Mr. Chair of the commission is receptive to it.
Oh, it's on a document there?
Yes.
Sure. Go ahead. You have enough for everyone?
Yes, I do. Yeah, on condition number thirteen, we just can't get it emptied out by the fifth.
Thanks.
We would love if we could have that condition changed to give us, on condition number thirteen, I believe it's number thirteen, where no storage beyond the fifth of July. We just can't get it out of there by, 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 you know, twelve oh one on the sixth. If we could have that condition, we would love ten days to be able to get the logistics where we could actually get it physically stored. Typically, we're done in five days, weather permitting. Mr. Chair.
Go ahead Lloyd.
So for clarification, really, that wood pile debris, you don't have a problem with that? That's going to be something Woodstock's, so we don't need to, I think that's just a working piece for the city to get something cleaned up. But if it works, it works. But the main, your main concern is you wanted extra time to be able to get your inventory out of there afterwards.
Yeah, with the selling season ending on July fifth, the only condition that, that we can't meet on there would be having the structure cleared on the, on the fifth of all the fireworks, just for the simple fact that we are still selling on that day, as per the state statute that allows us to sell on that day. Typically, on a normal season, all of our other structures are torn down, stored, and ready to be shipped for storage by the tenth. And, you know, that includes all the site tear-down and signs removal. So we asked for the fifteenth, that gives us ten days. Heaven forbid that we have a weather catastrophe like we did last year, a seventy-two mile an hour wind, and we're trying to figure out, you know, what direction's up. So that's the only thing that, on that, that's the only condition that, that we have. The wood pile exceeds the, the National Fire Code, more or less, it's just that one date that we had an issue with.
Okay. Any further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Rich.
Just so I'm clear, I mean, the, this conditional use permit is tied to the removal of that debris pile. I think, it's my opinion that these are two separate issues. One's an ordinance issue, and then this is a separate issue. You guys are okay with this staying on here as a condition of approval? And the wood pile will be removed before you guys operate your fireworks establishment?
Now, that's the next review. It has to be cleared up by the next review.
I think we should remove that condition.
I agree.
Because to me, it doesn't make any sense to tie you to someone else's business.
Remove, remove the wood?
No, remove the condition.
Yeah, remove the condition.
Oh, okay.
So, condition number two.
It's between, it's between who's ever complaining about it in the business to take care of that, not you guys. What, are you guys going to go over there and move their pile for them? I mean.
No.
Well, yeah. And then my other question was, it says that you can't start until June tenth, which was yesterday, or until the period of appeals. What's the period of appeals for this conditional use permit?
Five days.
Five days after it's approved? Don't we want to change that? Because don't you want to start selling this week?
We would love to.
Well, yeah, I mean, do we normally have that condition in other conditional use permits like this?
Typically, the conditional use permit isn't into effect until that five-day period, so it would be next Monday by five PM.
Okay, is that a?
Have anyone has a right to appeal it until that time.
But you're, you wanted to start selling this week, right?
If possible, yes.
Okay. Well, that would be a violation of the condition.
Nathan?
Well, first, I think we would ask the commission to remove that condition so they could sell pending appeal. But if the commission were to grant the conditional use permit on that condition, I think that, you know, All American Sales would have to accommodate that.
Okay. I just, anyone else have a question for Nathan or Travis?
Mr. Chair, maybe it's a point of clarification. So it says that prior to the next review of CU eighteen dash fourteen, is the intent of the staff recommended comment indicating that they have one year essentially to, this will be reviewed again next year, right? So, one year to move the debris pile, and it's not a condition of moving forward with the sales of the fireworks?
Yeah, I don't, don't think it'd affect this year.
Just so I'm clear.
Right.
Thank you.
If I can speak.
Go ahead.
I did have an opportunity to meet with the owner of the Woodstock Supply, Andrew Vig. I don't believe, oh, he, he is present, and he has been removing that, that wood pile. I think he estimates that what they're doing is they're chipping these wood strips. I understand that it's excess from his operations. He's got a couple of wood chippers out, out there, and they are removing at a rate of three to six truckloads a week, is my understanding. If the, you know, road in is dry enough and that sort of thing. So it has reduced in size even from what I believe is on the, on the photo there. So it is an ongoing issue that he is removing that.
Okay. Any further questions for Nathan or Travis?
I have one.
Go ahead.
I'm curious about condition seven. Did you say the building has two bathrooms in it, so?
No, two porta-johns will be provided.
Oh, I see. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Any other further questions? I have one for Brittany. I have a quick question. You may or may not be able to answer it. You might be able to answer it because of the fireworks regulations, but is there anything that says they can't stay until the fifteenth of July to package up? I mean, is there a regulation? I mean, is there a regulation in the states they have to pull stuff out of there?
Um, this, from what I understand, the state rules said that the sales of it can only occur from certain dates.
From certain dates.
In June and July, and then there's another period in December around the first of the year.
Yep.
Um, but those are in regards to sales.
Okay.
To be direct with you on that, there is no state and nor is there any federal regulation uh, that has jurisdiction in the state of South Dakota that would say that we could not store on that property year-round. Uh, as uh, Big, B I G, Big Fireworks, which is in the city of Box Elder, stores year-round on that property. Um, we would love to be able to store year-round on the property, but if it was a condition that, that you guys said that we had to have it removed, then we remove it. Our lease says we can store on the property year-round. So maybe that's another condition that we say, hey, can we store on it year-round? Makes things a lot easier for us. Because at, at that point, we're still putting it into uh, safe containers, safe space, sa- safe storage uh, in accordance with uh, eleven twenty-four storage and usage. Uh, we meet all those standards at all of our facilities, not just this one.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I do have an additional map, um, that i- it is expensive, but what's provided simply to show the other retail establishment, if the commission is interested.
Anyone else?
Sure.
So just looking at this map, um, the far left, that, that structure with the white roof is uh, Big Fireworks in the city of Box Elder Limits. Um, there's an I ninety R V s, storage center in between, and then the large L-shaped building is the Woodstock Supply Building. Um, with the, this map actually shows the, the retail space under construction. It is in kind of the uh, the upper right, um, not, not quite the smoking gun, um, indoor range. But, um, that, that shows also the distance between the, with the woodpile and the retailer.
All right, any further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
My only question is, I think the wood supply, I, I understand where they're coming from, that they've chipped that up, and then you turn it, resell it to probably the particle board plant out and wrap it. And so that takes time to get, get done. Um, as far as the storage, I just wanna remind some of the people that, you know, the year-round storage for fireworks, we just had two big fires out there. One was Excel and one was the ammunition plant across the highway, so, um.
Did they ever report what point of origin were or was?
No, I'm just bringing up a point.
Okay, I, I totally understand that.
I'm just bringing up, I don't think that what's being requested, I'm thinking ten days is plenty. I don't know what the rest of the commission.
Like I said, we would love to be able to store them there. Uh, to be honest, it's way safer for us because then you're not having to transport them to another facility at, at, at that point. But, once again, we, if, if you feel that we need to remove them completely from the property, we will abide by that.
So Lloyd, for either one of those fires, there's no, there hasn't been determination yet, are we aware of? On either one of the fires you were talking about?
Have they been what?
Have they determined the cause of the fire or anything of that nature?
No, I haven't investigated, I was just bringing up for fact that, you know, they have happened out there and and it apparently you haven't been storing them year-round right now, but what's in front of us is what you're asking for is an additional ten days, which I'd be fine with, and maybe next year if they wanna look, look at that or that's just my thoughts, I'm not throwing, throwing anything else out.
Mr. Chair, as, as I, as I read the recommendations here, um, so the, the applicant is okay with item number two, because it gives them a year to get rid of the pile. Item number five is June tenth through July fifth, right? You guys wanna go through the fifth? All the way till twelve A M? Correct?
For sale?
Yes.
For sale, yeah, the state allows us to sell through, through the end of fifth.
And then on item number seven, there will be two porta-potties available to the public and not one. On item number thirteen, um, you would have that no fireworks be stored on the subject property outside of June tenth through, if we gave you an extra ten days, that would be July fifteenth. Is there any other, um, concerns with any of the, the recommendations?
Uh, the let Nathan say that.
Go ahead.
Uh, the other concern that uh, All American Sales would have would be uh, if, if possible, to remove the condition number twelve, that the applicant not start selling fireworks until the appeals period has expired, simply so they can, um, then sell now. They do have a license, uh, a, a special retail license to sell to non-residents as of uh, May one. Um, they, they could not legally sell to South Dakota residents until June twenty-seventh, in any event.
Not sure we can do that with our, um, advertising for the meeting, is that a, is that true?
Michelle.
Michelle Hoffman, State Attorney's Office, what was the specific question?
The specific question is, is, um, they would like to start selling the fireworks immediately uh, and eliminate, um, recommendation number twelve, that the applicant not start selling fireworks until after the period of appeals. Um, but I'm not sure we can go there because don't we have to have the period of appeals in place?
I have not had an opportunity to research that particular issue, but it does raise a concern because I think the pill time period is built in, so adjoining neighbors who might object to this operation have the opportunity to appeal this commission's decision. If you allow them to begin operation right away, you're essentially, um, nullifying neighbors that opportunity. Because by the time they ever get this, their appeal back before the commission.
It's already done, yeah, great. So I'm, I'm, I'm not in favor of changing item number twelve, um, I'm okay with the rest of the changes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead Lloyd.
I still think we should eliminate condition two, cause it, to me, it ties an issue that doesn't, it, it, I, I, I would suggest eliminating condition two, but that's my opinion.
Go ahead Lloyd.
I, I agree with Lori, cause only after seeing the pictures of, of what they're talking about and, and, and working in the forest range as long as I have, I know to chip it up takes a while and, and it.
It's gonna accumulate again.
Yeah, it is, it's gonna be an ongoing thing, and I don't think they should be tied to one or the other.
Okay, any further questions or statements?
Yeah.
Andrew Vig from Woodstock Supply, and just to clarify a little so there's less confusion on the strips and the chips. Um, the pile did accumulate, uh, it will continue to build. Um, I had been working for probably two years to get Terry Rosman in there to grind them up. Finally, he worked it in where he's got a chip, two chippers there, and they are chipping them up. Uh, Friday, they haul two loads out. Um, quite possibly, we'll have them out by the end of the month. Um, it is our intention not to let them build up again. You can't let it turn into a monster like that again. Now, um, so, um, I, Terry, I talked to him, I says, I, I understand they have concerns with fireworks. What can we do? And he said, I'll do the best I can, but the weather, you know, it's gonna get muddy back there, there are challenges. But we're doing our level best and we're, we'll just get it cleaned up, so, if that helps at all.
Okay. Any further questions? Comments? All right, current recommendation is staff recommends approval of conditional U C U eighteen fourteen with the following fifteen conditions. Uh, I've heard some discussion about some changes. Um, y'all are welcome to sit down unless you feel like you need to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and make the motion on this. So, uh, I'll recommend to approve conditional use permit C U eighteen fourteen um, with the fifteen conditions with the following changes. One, that item number two be eliminated. Uh, item number five clarified such that it's June tenth through July fifth. Item number seven is that there's a minimum of two porta-potties be available for the public use. Um, item number twelve remains as is. Uh, item number thirteen is changed to read, um, no fireworks be stored on the subject property outside of June tenth through uh, July fifteenth. I believe that that covers all the changes.
A second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number eighteen.
Item number eighteen is conditional use permit C U eighteen to allow a temporary labor camp on the subject property in the general agriculture district. Um, currently, as the property stands now, it is own general agriculture district. It consists of forty point three acres, access is from cash lane. There are currently two twenty-four by eighteen cabins and an eighteen by sixteen cabin. Um, all were built without building permits. Uh, there is an outhouse on the property that does have a bulk privy that was put underneath of it. Um, our environmental planner did go out and verify, um, and permit that bulk privy. There are storage sheds on the property. It appears that these cabins, the outhouse and the sheds that were built somewhere, sometime between nineteen ninety-five and two thousand sixteen. Um, there's no special flood hazard area on this property. Uh, the National Forest Service borders the eastern property line. And the existing cabins are used for seasonal labors when working cattle on, on the subject property. Um, the Pennington County zoning ordinance does not have a definition for labor camp. Staff turned to the American Finding Association and Planner's Dictionary adopted via report five twenty-one dash five twenty-two, where a labor camp is defined as a camp established in agricultural areas for transient labor. Um, in this case, it is used for, um, cattle and, um, calving. Um, in P Z O, section two oh four D, temporary uses state within each district, there may be certain seasonal or transient uses which are non-permanent in nature and which do not alter the intent of the district. Temporary use permits for any districts that require a conditional use permit was regulated in section five ten. So that's where we're at with this request. Um, staff's, um, recommendation was for this to require a conditional use permit as it meets those criteria. Um, the considerations for a conditional use permit, um, the effect of the use and enjoyment of other property, due to the location of the subject property, this conditional use permit should have, have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the area. The effect of the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding vacant property, allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding vacant property in the area. The utilities accessed for drainage and other necessary facilities are provided. Um, there's an outhouse with an approved bulk privy that is utilized on the subject property, access is off an existing road. Um, and due to the nature and limited use of the cabins, none of the facilities appear to be necessary. Then off-street parking and loading requirements are meant, um, there appears to be ample room for parking on this property. Um, the measures are taking into control the offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise and vibration, lighting. So it's none, none of these will constitute a nuisance, but proposed conditional use by its very nature should have limited effects on those. So staff is recommending approval of this conditional use permit with ten conditions.
Any questions for staff? Oh, go ahead Lori.
Brittany, the structures that are, there, it looks like the cabins were built, um, do we have any, any idea of the condition of those? I mean, that they'll be able to get building permits? And then it also looks like they utilize maybe some trailers and RVs or something, is that correct?
Correct, and right now, um, our environmental planner did go out there and he said that the property was well-kept. The building seemed to be in good repair, um, it was, you know, wasn't anything of concern.
But the RVs and, and, um, campers and stuff, they would be part of this too? It would allow them to have them, you know, in, in the air?
As part of the temporary camp.
Okay.
And I'm trying to see if P J incorporated that as part of the, um,
I don't remember seeing.
Conditional use permit.
I don't remember seeing RVs on the conditional use permit either for conditions.
You may wanna add that as a condition just to be.
Yeah. I mean, do we need to add something to condition eight, something about cabins and temporary structures or something, I don't know. You know, just as long as they're not using it for a campground.
Correct.
Was, is the intent of, of condition eight, right?
Yes.
No commercial activity?
Yes, it was just in order for the, the property owners to, you know, have transient labor to help out with the running of the ranch essentially.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any further questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
My, I think I was along the same question. When I was looking at this, I seen labor camp and I'm going, and I look at the property, is this for, to bring employees in? And they can stay here and then they ranch somewhere else, or is it all on this property? Cause it, it's almost appears like it's a campground to me.
Sure, um, I don't know if the applicant, is he?
The applicant.
Okay, I'll let him speak directly to that.
I just need to, I look at pictures, I see one thing and, and I'm, I'm reading another, so.
I, I'd like to clarify, I'm James Rogers, um, I own the property. Um, it is not bringing any employees whatsoever, it's bringing family, friends that come up and help with the cattle. We've, we've got approximately a hundred and twenty animals up there between de- between deeded ground of our own and leased ground. Um, we run that cattle operation up in that high country, so we spend quite a little bit of time up there. Fences are a big, major issue. Consequently, we have to spend time up there doing that because of the Forest Service leases surrounding us, there's a lot of other cattle. Um, we do all of our branding up there, uh, so we spend quite a little bit of time, and it's rather far from our, where we live and, and friends and neighbors and stuff like that. Uh, that's why we, we ask for the conditional use permit to be able to house people up there, it's pretty primitive, we don't have any utilities or anything like that. It's, uh, so that we're not traveling back and forth to try to, to run the operation.
Well, thanks for your clarification, cause that makes a lot more sense now than why you'd fix it up to make it look better to be get.
We, we did fix it up to try to make things look nice, but it's, it's, uh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead Rich. Um, it appears, I don't know, and Mr. Rogers, maybe you can answer this question. Um, is there, is there a fire pit there and do we need to do anything with that?
Yes, there is, and I do have a permit for that.
You do?
Yes.
All right.
Any further questions?
No.
Any further questions for James? Okay, any further questions for staff? Any audience members like to speak on behalf of this item? All right, thank you James.
Thank you.
All right, current recommendation is approve conditional use permit C U eighteen dash seventeen with the following ten conditions.
It's moved.
Motion and second, any further discussion?
Was there going to be a correction or a change to at least one of these to allow the RVs? In addition to the, cause right now it just says cabins? Wasn't there a discussion about adding something?
Yeah, I think we should add something about the cabins, you know, cabins and the
RVs.
RVs, yeah, or whatever.
That they can park up.
That they're for personal use only, yeah, that, so people don't, you know, it's not a campground, it's a I would think it, you would add that to condition eight.
Okay.
Is that, is that okay with the one who made the motion and the second or?
Um, I guess I'd, I'd like to understand what the full, uh, full recommendation would be. So let's come up with the wording and then.
That the cabins and RVs be used for personal use only? No commercial activity or renting shall be permitted?
And then the, the RVs have to be the only onsite within a certain period of time, is that right? That's what normally happens?
Well, yeah, they're only being used a hundred and eighty days a year. I'm, I'm assuming some people don't wanna stand a cabin, they just bring their own, their own place, they wanna sleep in their own bed.
Some of the cabins be used, the cabins and our, RVs be used for personal use only, and the RVs are restricted onsite to a hundred and eighty days?
Yeah, cause you don't have anything that you put up there, no one keeps it up there year-round, do they?
Well, I don't, or condition four, it talks about the seasonal labor camp may not be occupied more than a hundred and eighty days. I would think that would catch.
The RVs.
Yeah, the RVs and that.
Well, as the cabins.
As for how long they can be up there.
So item eight would be changed to state that the cabins be, cabins and RVs be used for personal use only. No commercial activity or renting shall be permitted.
All right. Who made the?
I concur with that.
All right, motion and second, they both agree. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries, takes us to item number nineteen.
Okay, item number nineteen is conditional use permit C U eighteen zero four to allow for a specialty recreational resort and event menu, venue to include music events, weddings, markets, seasonal festivities, community events, festivals, rental space, rental, then breakfast, vacation rental and art retail store in the general agriculture district. This item has been in front of you, um, previously. Uh, the applicant and the planning director and the fire administrator have met and gone over, um, these conditions. And to my knowledge, um, and to the knowledge of the planning director, that these conditions are in agreement with the parties. Um, the fire administrator. The fire administrator just did have a couple concerns, which one of the entries was too low. And then there were holes on the property that needed to be filled in. But other than that, with that, staff is recommending, or excuse me, based on the comments from the fact that there are some safety concerns, and they just want to verify that those have been addressed. And if the planning commission chooses to approve this conditional use permit, staff recommends twenty conditions.
All right, so clarify.
The applicant is here in the audience to.
So there is no recommendation at this point in time from the planning unless?
Unless those conditions are met from the plan, or the fire administrator or fire coordinator.
All right, any questions for staff?
Where are those, where are those listed in the, in the packet again?
Um, I'm not sure that they were, I might have came in after the fact. That was just comments that PJ had made to me with concerns that the fire administrator had.
Start on page eight.
Yeah, that's the only thing I see is twister.
Go ahead Kathy.
Just so I'm clear, the, there's the conditions, that these twenty conditions, but then in addition to that, there are a few items that the, that the, you know, on safety issues that, that are going to be, need to be corrected, you know, prior to approval with these conditions. Is that right?
Correct. That was the planning director's information to me was that to have the applicant verify that those have been addressed. If they have been addressed and the planning commission is satisfied with the remedy that has been, and they have addressed what the fire coordinator requested that they recommended these twenty conditions.
But specifically, I mean, there is quite a number of pages here that looks like from the, from the, regarding the safety issues. And so somewhere in those pages is, is what the recommendations were that needed to be addressed in the short term.
Correct.
Any further questions for staff?
I would like to understand a little bit more how that's going to happen. So we would, if we, if we approve this, and then it says prior to operation, the applicant meet with the fire administrator and planning director onsite to address safety concerns uncovered during the fire administrator's site visit. And then at that point, will there be a deadline on getting those safety items addressed prior to operation? I mean, ultimately, we just need to make sure that, that all of those items are in place and done before this thing operates, right?
Right. And when I had met with PJ on Friday, he said there was two that were still of concern. One was the, one of the entries was too low, and that there were holes on the property that needed to be filled in. Those are the only two that he had spoke to that, that hadn't been.
The entry and what was the second one?
There were holes on the property that needed to be filled in.
Because people would fall in them?
Yeah.
They're like big holes?
I'm assuming so, yes. The applicant is here in the audience. You have further questions?
Any further questions for staff? I have one. Item number eighteen. I don't remember seeing something like this before. Maybe we have, but I just don't remember seeing it. The planning director has a final determination on the interpretation of conflicting conditions of approval. And the applicant, if not in concurrence with the planner's direction, director's decision, may request a hearing before the planning commission. They can do that anyway. I'm just trying to wonder why it had to be placed in there. Is there something that we're unaware of?
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing that.
Yeah, that mean that's just.
Neither, but I don't know if there was something that came up in the meetings with the planning director and the fire coordinator that warranted that condition.
Okay. Any further questions for staff? All right. Is there any audience members that would like to speak on behalf of this item? Come on up. State your names.
Good morning. Shelby Johnson.
Good one Shelby.
Jacob Boydland, co-owner of the Claytail Barn and Lasse.
I guess we just have, we just want to address any questions you guys have. With this is a little bit confusing. I think as you guys were speaking, what seems most appropriate to us. It's unclear as to why it's not a condition, but it would, it seems most appropriate that there would be a condition that we would have addressed all of these fire concerns before we're operational, just like you guys were saying. I'm not sure why it's not in here. The holes and the holes and then I guess transition way is what Jerome was talking about. Those things are remaining things that need to be done. We're obviously applying for a permit before we continued to renovate the barn. It still needs a lot of work done. We just didn't want, we can't put a lot of money into it until we know we can have a permit probably. So those will be things that we will have completed before we're operational, I guess. I don't know how you might want to write that as a condition or it seems like. I don't know. Do you have any comment?
Isn't that one? Isn't, isn't that condition one?
Yeah, I guess I'm not sure.
Because part of condition one you've already done, which is to meet with the fire administrator and planning director onsite. So I think the latter half to address safety concerns, you know, prior to operation, you need to do that. So I think that's, I think that's the intent anyway is that's the number one.
Okay, that sounds good. I'm not sure why it was brought up separately then. But yeah.
Probably because if you haven't completed any construction or any of the work there, they want to do a final inspection to, to verify that everything is, you know, up, up to code, if you will.
Yeah.
I don't know if code's the right word, since we don't have codes like that here, but they want to make sure it's safe. And they can't do that until you're done building. So if you're in the process of building, they can't say, well, we, it's, it's safe. Well, they don't know. It's not done. So that could be the reason why it was worded that way. Any further questions?
Yeah, I'd like to, do you have any insight into condition eighteen, which was the one that?
No, we were just talking about that. We actually saw that. I'm not entirely sure why that's relevant. I thought it was just a blanket statement that they included on all of them, so I'm unclear as to why it's in there.
Well, it jumped out at me because it's not something I see on them.
Okay, I thought it was in all of them, or for everybody.
You always have the right to appeal a decision.
That's what I thought.
But isn't the right to appeal to the commission rather than to this board?
Correct.
Well, but no, I mean, doesn't, doesn't an applicant always have the right that if they don't like what the planning director's saying that it goes to the commission, the planning commission, before it goes to the county board, right?
Right. Well, but CUP is if we approve them, they don't go to the board, right?
So a conditional use permit can be reviewed if we get a substantiated complaint from, you know, a neighboring property owner or such, or if the applicant requests it to either change conditions or address concerns that may have come up during the operation of the, the property or, or the use. It happens quite often that, you know, a property owner may change, you know, or they may operate for a, a time and find that certain things don't work, or that certain things are warranted and they'll request it to be revered in front of you. So the applicant can ask for that too.
So it can be done administratively by the planning director, correct? And if the, if the applicant's not happy with it, then it comes to us, right?
They can request to have the conditional use permit reviewed in front of the planning commission.
Yeah. That, every, every applicant has that right.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever denied anyone the ability to come in front of you to request that.
So I don't know why that's there either.
Yeah, I mean, it just flagged me because I'm like, wait a minute. Okay. Go ahead Lloyd.
As I was reviewing this, first of all, I, I think your restoration of the barn is fantastic. That's, it's looking very good. But I was kind of wondering where the direction was going with this because there were some statements that you had some stuff on a website that you're already operating and things were going forward. And so that kind of confused me as I was going through this, but then listening to you, you say you're, it's work in progress. And I think all the requirements that Jerome and the staff are asking is a learning curve for you, and you're taking that as input to include it in your construction, what you're doing, right?
That's correct. Yeah. I think that there was misinterpretation. We, we're a little bit misguided by our first planner that we could advertise about what we would be having and what we would be doing. And so we had some things up on our website, but we're obviously not operational, and I just password-protected our website. But we're not anywhere close to being operational, and so we have not taken any bookings, anything. The, yeah, so I think that was the main concern.
So you, you're pretty much, all the recommendations that they're talking about, you're going to incorporate as far as the stairs, the, the fire signs, all that, you're working with them and the, on level floors and the, okay.
Yes, exactly. Since it's an historic building, I guess we kind of wanted some guidance first before we, you know, just tried to go by code because it's a little bit difficult in a, in a building like that.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I guess my, my question is, when did, when, what's the timeline for completion of this ongoing project?
I think our intention was to be, our intention was to be complete and potentially operational by the fall of two thousand eighteen. And I think things might change there. You might have different ideas, Jacob, but I don't, we will not be operational this summer or spring or anything. It won't, it won't be before then. We have a lot of work to do, so.
Well, I'd just like to say I really have to hand it to you for taking this project on. This barn could just deteriorate more and more every year, and pretty soon it'd be nothing but a pile of rubble. And you're saving it and using it for a, a good purpose. So, you know, I really have to hand it to you for taking it on. It's a big project.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead Rich. Are you guys getting help with, um, who's helping you with the loft flooring? And the support for that flooring and the, the design for the structure?
We're not, we're not changing the design of this structure. We, we've just renovated the, the existing structure.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're going back with what was there before, just rebuilding it?
Precisely, just with new materials, yes, and, and where they need to be replaced.
And I'm speaking from experience. I went to a wedding outside of Minneapolis, and it was in a similar large barn structure, and you got a lot of people up in this lofted area inside of this barn to the point where the floor started moving more than I cared to be up there, and I came down. So I'm, it's just a safety concern that I would have to make sure that restrictions are put accordingly with the structural capacity of the lofted areas.
And we did make, we did make one change to the original structure of the barn. We doubled the number of joists that are up there, so it, it's, it can handle a quite substantial load, no?
Okay. Any further questions?
Nope.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other audience members? I see none out here. So they currently don't have a recommendation. However, if we do approve, there, there are twenty recommend, twenty conditions that are recommended. We talked about eighteen, you know, I think eighteen is already a default one that we already understand. I don't know if that needs to be in there personally, so.
I, I will move to approve this item with the recommendations as printed, but with the deletion of recommendation, the condition eighteen. Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That takes us to item number twenty.
Item number twenty is a county board report. The Board of Commissioners heard the planning commission's recommendations from their May fourteenth and May twenty-ninth meetings at their June seventh, two thousand eighteen Board of Commissioners meeting. Preliminary PL eighteen oh nine and subdivision regulations variants SV eighteen oh two for Eric and Heidi Hendrickson. Spurlet Consulting was as the agent to create lots one through ten of Bromgrass subdivision, and the way planning requirements was approved by the board. And rezone, RZ eighteen oh two and comprehensive plan amendment CE eighteen oh two for Eric and Heidi Hendrickson, Spurlet Consulting agent, was continued to the June nineteen, two thousand eighteen Board of Commissioners meeting.
Any questions, comments? Yes, go ahead.
Do you know what the issue was for that? Why they went, why it was, why the one item was continued?
I believe that they wanted, to have some of the commissioners wanted to actually go out to the property because there was concerns about the flood plain and the location of the flood plain on some of those lots.
Because that was a rezoned from what to what? I don't remember that.
Um, it was that large piece of property, and they were subdividing it to bring into compliance some of the existing residences that were out there.
Oh, okay.
Um, and then I think, believe right now.
On your computer?
Yes, it's zone general agriculture district, so some of the lots went down to three acres, so they would have to do low-density residential district and some limited agriculture in addition to the general ag. And if I'm correct, I think that was some of the concern with some of the smaller lots and the flip.
I'm, I'm thinking of maybe the other one.
This was the one that was quite a bit of public testimony during that one.
I thought we approved that staff recommendations because planning, yeah, planning commissions was.
To deny it.
Approving part and denying part.
Correct.
And we went to staff recommendations.
To approve.
And continue, yeah.
And then to continue the rezon, I believe, because I think.
To you.
Yeah.
You take a look at?
There was a lot of discussion on that.
All right. Thank you very much. There's no further questions. Item twenty-one, items from the public. I see no public out there. Item twenty-two, items from staff.
The building permit report. There's about three items of significance. The single-family residences are up quite a bit this year and mobile homes. And the overall total, the construction cost went from about ten million to about fifteen million for this year from last year.
Nice. Any items from the membership? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's moved.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.